Okay, I'll call the meeting order. Welcome to the regular monthly meeting of the Board of Commissioners held for the purpose of transacting the general business of the township. Today's date is April 14th, 2021, due to social distancing guidelines and the regulations imposed by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania on indoor gatherings. This meeting is being conducted remotely utilizing the Zoom video conference platform. Instructions for accessing the meeting and for submitting public comment were made available on the township's website in advance of the meeting. Please stand and join the Board of Commissioners in a moment of silent reflection honoring the service men and women who placed themselves at harm's way in order to help preserve our safety at home and overseas. Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, I'd like to entertain a motion dispensing with a reading of the minutes of the previous meeting as written and recorded in the official minute book of the township.
Make that motion?
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Say nay. Okay, please report a unanimous vote. And I believe all of our board members are are here and although Commissioner Lee will be reading Commissioner Maxwell's report because Commissioner Maxwell went to the dentist today and he's not speaking that well, so. And we don't have any substitute professionals or solicitors here and okay, all right. Like to announce that the Board of Commissioners conducted a special executive session meeting on April 12th, 2021 as part of the regular scheduled workshop meeting to discuss two matters of litigation and three personnel matters. And I would like to read our statement on American relations, which we put up on our website about two weeks ago. Over this long past year, we have seen the embedded scourge of racism intolerance and xenophobia ever present in our history. Once again, rise up to towering malignancy as these lesser impulses have been given new voice and a disheartening tolerance. Sadly, often by our own national political leaders whose rhetoric has sought to stroke fear and lay blame on the challenges we have faced. Springfield has stood up to these negative impulses and we seek to reaffirm our condemnation of the hate and intolerance that continues. On March 16th, we all recoiled at the news of eight people murdered in Georgia, six of whom were Asian American women by a lone gunman and a clear act of hate. This horrific tragedy followed recent more local events of similar xenophobia. A violent attack on an Asian American business owner in Norristown and hateful anti-Asian slurs being spread amongst students in a neighborhood neighboring school district. Since the start of the pandemic a year ago, nearly 3,800 hate incidents have been reported against Asian Americans nationwide. From a recent congressional hearing on the topic, it was made clear the rise in discrimination has brought the American, the Asian American community in the US to a crisis point that cannot be ignored. This community is inclusive of Springfield's own Asian population and works. Their crisis is our crisis. We therefore want to make it clear to our neighbors that Springfield Township is a place that supports and nurtures the safety and security of all people. The basic ability to be free from any crime against one's personhood is inherent to building better communities. One act of xenophobic discrimination negatively impacts all of us. No matter who you are, the victims of these bigoted acts and attitudes are our neighbors and friends, family members and loved ones. As such, we stand united with our Asian American and Pacific Islander community members and categorically condemn any such act of discrimination or violence against any person, particularly born out of xenophobic and racist views. We know that we are not immune from hate. Over the past year, we have seen vile, seen vile leaflets distributed cowardly on our streets and objectionable ad hominem attacks written on placards and posted in public places for all to see. We rose up to forcibly condemn each one of these acts through our provocative initiatives of expanding the number of residents on our local civil service commission, seeking ongoing dialogues with residents through surveys and town halls on police community relations. And we continue to work to reform our local human relations coordinates and otherwise proactively ensure our governance and oversight reflects the values of inclusion and diversity in our community. We will continue to the work of combating all harassment and discrimination, keeping the recent vulnerability of the Asian American community in mind. Hate has no home in Springfield Township. So thank you for allowing me to read that. Okay, next on the, my, my list here is a comment about 380-42 Hawes Lane. Within the last two weeks, the owner of the subject property shared with the Board of Commissioners an alternate concept plan for the development of the former traditions of Springfield. Property located at 380-402 Hawes Lane, Erdentheim. In 2013, the tradition's development received preliminary land development approval for the construction of a 107 unit retirement home. For a variety of reasons, that project did not immediately proceed, but in 2019, a proposal was put forth for the construction of a 100 unit age restricted apartment complex on the site. That proposal was subsequently withdrawn due to negative feedback received by the community. The developer's latest proposal contemplated the construction of between 36 and 41 townhomes in places, oh, in place of any other use that may otherwise be permitted in the institutional zoning district. Those uses include public or private schools and/or their adjunct residential facilities, churches and their adjunct residential facilities, convents and monasteries, municipal buildings, community recreational facilities and playgrounds, libraries and museums, hospitals, clinics, nursing and personal care homes or assisted living residences and group homes, group daycare homes or daycare centers for children. Headquarters for nonprofit educational fraternal professional religious and other organizations of a similar nature. Athletic field with stadium facilities, cemeteries, which when authorized by special exception may include mausoleum, maus, excuse me, mausoleums or crematoriums. Accessory uses on the same lot and customarily incidental to any of the above permitted uses, single family detached dwellings also. In order to facilitate a public discussion on the merits of the latest proposal, the Board of Commissioners has directed the developer to meet the Springfield Township Planning Commission on May 4th, 2021 to share the details of their proposal and to solicit feedback from the planners and community members. And I have a few more comments on this also. So in addition to those, those items, I would like to bring to light just some, our discussion of last night, which started at about 10:30. As you all know, from the history of this site, I just read to you the history up to about 2019 and then since then, we've discussed a public park on that site. The, we've kind of, I'm not sure if we've resolved it all, but it appears that that would be an expensive proposition. And it doesn't appear that there's a lot of grant money available for a thing like that, although, you know, one never knows. The developers also, we heard from them that they were sort of shopping the, the property to a nursing home facility developer somewhere in the Midwest and as of a month or two ago, that hadn't materialized. And then they then presented this current plan. I got a chance to take a look at the plan briefly in its sort of first iteration. I'm not sure that anybody else really did, but really it was then kind of, I believe our solicitor Jim Garrity and Mike Taylor were in touch with the developer and basically, you know, instructed them to sort of, you know, make a better plan out of it. And what we asked is that they reduce the, the units from 41 to 35 if they, if they, if we were to take it seriously. They haven't done that yet, but you know, perhaps they will. And so now, you know, as of last night, really that was the first time that any of us really got a chance to take a look at the site, the plan. I take that back. Actually, it was a couple of days ago. We were, we were given the plan a couple of days ago so that we could actually go to the site and see what the plan looks like in, in real life. We were able to visit the plan and they staked out the corners of some of the lots. So that's what happened. And anyway, Patrick Addis joined us for the discussion. And I will say that after a few minutes, the discussion got quite a bit heated to the point where he accused me of shouting at him and I know I have a loud voice, but he's right. I probably was shouting at him and so. I honestly feel that, you know, Patrick and the board are really on the same page in terms of insofar as we are, we're all interested in guaranteeing as much transparency in our, in our actions and that sort of thing. The, 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 the idea that we were holding a discussion of this off until the, the wee hours of the morning or something was in no way meant to obscure the importance of this or anything like that. But why I got upset was I felt that Patrick sort of crossed the line at a point where he suggested that some of us, including me, had a financial interest in the property. And I will say that after, you know, 20 years, it was the first time that I've ever been accused of anything like that. And, you know, my feeling is, you know, my role as the president is I'm, I'm here to sort of protect the integrity of, of the, of the Board of Commissioners and stand up for it. And I felt that was basically a proper response to let him know that, that just simply is not the case. And, you know, Patrick went on to basically challenge our solicitor on his ethical standards. But I also understand that, you know, there was a point where things got heated. So I will say this, that, and then afterwards, you know, Patrick and I had traded some, I think some basically nonsensical emails. I just seem to forget some of those, but I, I want to, at this point, I want to sincerely apologize to Patrick for, for raising my voice. It wasn't appropriate. So I apologize for that. I feel that, you know, regardless of the fact that, you know, things got heated, we're, I think we're all on the same page. Patrick has been a public servant, a member of our EAC for, for many years. I see him consistently joining us on planning commission and others, other things. And I welcome him to, you know, continue to join us and I would also, you know, personally invite him to sit down with me and see if we can maybe, you know, iron out our differences and talk about, you know, where we agree or disagree. I don't think we're going to agree on everything, but I would extend that olive leaf. So those are my sort of comments about that.
He's a branch, right?
You're gonna, oh, yeah, yeah. Laurel and Hardy handshake, as they say in. Anyway.
And Baird, and Baird, if I could just add one additional piece to your, your very good summation of our discourse on the, the project. We also had some pretty exhausted, exhaustive conversations with the school district as well to see if there was a one interest on their part by themselves, but also to see if they wanted to partner with the township. And Pete Wilson has also been a leader in just trying to find really any alternative use for this site. So, you know, just to kind of echo your sentiment, I would say that we have and we will continue to do sort of explore all, all, all possible options, solutions, et cetera.
Yep, right. And I'll also say this, you know, we have a history of bringing this, these types of projects in front of our public. And I've been doing this for 20 years and started with the Boris and TC. And, you know, more recently it was with the Lloyd Estate and, you know, I worked long and hard with commissioners on the Cheltenham Board to work out a plan that would incorporate both their piece and our piece so that it wouldn't be as intense along Willow Grove, but maybe a little more intense, I guess, in Springfield. We, and I was, you know, I was tentatively, tentatively for that plan, but we heard from our neighbors and, you know, I changed my mind. I, you know, I decided, you know, if, if our neighbors don't like this plan, we're not going to go ahead and do it. And so there's no, there's nothing wrong with changing your mind. And my feeling about this project and this housing development is, I'm sort of tentatively in favor of it because honestly, I don't think I've seen anything better. But there may be something better out there or maybe something will happen that I don't know about, or maybe, you know, when we get into a public forum, we go to the planning commission, somebody will say something that, you know, rings a bell or something. So I'm, I just want to keep an open mind about all of this, you know, so.
And it should be noted, obviously, we don't own, the township doesn't own the property. It's
Right.
We don't own the property. Private property owner who can make application for whatever they want.
That's right.
Listen to it. We don't have to.
That's right.
Agree with it.
That's exactly right.
But I know a lot of commissioners have put a lot of hours in to try to find, you know, alternate uses and plans, but at the end of the day, it's, it's, you know, it's privately owned.
Yep.
Baird, will you? If I may, I, I think it should also be noted that we, that the board did not nefariously wait until 10:30 to address some of those issues. It should be a matter of record that the reason that we addressed it was because the board had opened up public comment to address other issues of public safety to residents along Paper Mill Road.
That's right.
On Willow Grove Avenue. So the forum was opened to the public and we were addressing those issues first to residents that took the time to come before this board and express their issues of concern.
That's right.
Opening this board up, always having a democratic policy and addressing its residents. That should be noted that the reasoning that we even started to approach it at 10:30 was because we were addressing the needs of other residents.
That's exactly right. Yes. And we will have our, you know, this, this property will have its day in court, you know, May 4th, in fact. You know, coming up pretty soon. So.
Mr. President, can I, can I request that we, because we didn't have any public comment at the beginning of the meeting here?
We haven't yet. We will be, yes.
And, and this, and this issue is of the moment. Can I, can I request that we open, open the audience for, for, for public comment on this? One item at this point in time?
Um. We can. I have one more. I have a, I have a service award for Roddy Davis. Can I get through that? And I'll think about, about two minutes and then let me go back. Let me do that. Okay. So the next is, and I see Bonnie's in the, in the audience. So I don't want to keep anybody waiting. So the COVID pandemic and associated restrictions on the number individuals, on the number of individuals who may assemble indoors at public gatherings has required the public, the Board of Commissioners to meet in a remote format since April 2020. As a result, the board's usual practice of recognizing the retirements of employees via the presentation of a service award or resolution was temporarily suspended. However, the board did not wish for the retirement of Ruth Meyer Roddy Davis in 2020 to go unnoticed. Mr. Davis began his employment as a Springfield Township crossing guard in January 2008 at the original Enfield Elementary School. Mr. Davis faithfully staffed one of the busiest crossings in the township until the closing of the school in 2020. During Mr. Davis's 12 years of service, he could always be counted on to be at his post regardless of weather conditions or school schedule. The Board of Commissioners and Springfield Township Police Department on behalf of all of the school, children and parents. Mr. Davis insisted over his many years of service, wish him a happy and healthy retirement. Mr. Davis will be receiving a service award to recognize his 12 years of service to the Springfield Township community. So congratulations to Roddy.
Well done.
Yep. Okay. So then we'll go into the public portion of the meeting. I'll just announce that. Due to the limitations of the size of indoor public gatherings, all regular and special meetings of the Board of Commissioners and Township Advisory Boards will continue to occur virtually using the Zoom video conferencing platform until further notice. Meeting details and instructions on how to access meetings can be found on the township's website in advance of each meeting. So now the board is open to comments or questions from the public. The board draws particular attention to those items listed on the agenda this evening. Please be advised that once the committee reports begin, the board can no longer accept questions from the board, from the floor, excuse me. At the conclusion of the committee reports, public comment will once again be accepted. However, official action on those issues listed on the agenda will have already taken place. Therefore, if you wish to comment on an agenda item now would be the appropriate time. Okay, Ellen Stevenson. You had your hand up first.
All right, Ellen. Thank you. Um, I'd like to ask the board to consider acquiring natural lands to do an audit of the open space and large parcels of land throughout Springfield Township. And the reason I'm asking for that now is because, you know, as development proposals come up, they seem to be addressed in a, just as one issue. But as they continue, as Springfield continues to develop, a lot of neighbors, not just myself, are concerned about overdevelopment. And the reason for that is just looking around at what's happening in Upper Dublin and other collar communities right outside Philadelphia. I think they're all under tremendous pressure. And the reason I think I, an up to date audit of what actually exists in Springfield Township, what is environmentally sensitive and should be preserved and what should be, what can be considered for development in a way that really fits the goals of the community could be identified. So I know the township has worked with natural lands in the play, in the past, and it was a positive experience. I have spoken with the CEO and director, the planning director of Natural Lands. They have a tremendous agenda of programs, including grants that they offer to municipalities. I think once that audit is completed, it would be the first step in the board, perhaps putting together a legal development plan. And I think the community would be interested and relieved to know that the board was looking at the Springfield as a whole and preserving for future generations who will live here what is environmentally sensitive. And that's my request.
Okay, thank you. And I will say that, you know, we, we have a comprehensive plan that we, we put together every few years. And the last one was, you know, Mike, you remember when the last one was? But I think the new one is coming up. We're coming up. It was going to be.
Yes.
Yeah. So I think the new one will be revised or, or, or put out in the next, within the next year or two. Although I can't remember exactly what the target date is.
Can you, can you take a look at the scope of that program?
Yeah.
To see if there's looking at, looking at land within environmental.
Right. But Brandon has been in touch with Natural Lands Trust recently. Do you want, Brandon, can you give us just a little bit of an idea of what they're up to and?
Sure.
Be able to help us.
Okay. I, I've actually had several conversations with Natural Lands and we do have pricing from them. So we do, we do have that. Where, where the rub comes, so to speak, is, you know, the availability of grants. And, you know, just for the public information, Natural Lands does not offer grants. They facilitate the acquisition of grants. So they help municipalities get grants from other organizations, the county, the state.
Excuse me. They just closed their grant initiative, a $10,000 grant that they actually offer with PICO. It's a combined organizations and it's, it would be ideal for this kind of project.
Mike, did, do you want to, can I or?
You can, yeah, you wrote the grant. You got it.
Yeah. And Ms. Stevenson, I'm happy to say that Springfield is one of the recipients of that grant from Natural Lands. You know, unfortunately, slash unfortunately, it, we put in for Mermaid Park. So we're going to be getting that $8,000 from Natural Lands. We've actually received the check this week from them to go towards the, the Mermaid Park project. So we are applying for, for such grants. And, you know, as to my statement before, you know, a lot of the grants that Natural Lands recommends or has recommended that we go for are grants that we have gone for in the past, at least since I've joined the team that we've actually received. One grant that they recommend is DCNR grant that we received last year for Cisco. And another one that they recommended is the county grant, which we received last year for Mermaid. So a lot, you know, they are a great group of individuals, but unfortunately, you know, the grant, they do not offer direct large scale grants other than, you know, the, the, their program with PICO.
Brandon, outside of the Hawes Lane, and I believe we talked to them about Hawes Lane, about the potential of an engagement. The, the grants that you're mentioning are for, for public projects. Have you talked to them at all about land acquisition for the purpose of preservation?
Yes, that was actually our, our first conversation with this property in mind specifically. And there were a number of conditions, one being that we would have to demo everything on the site. They will not, you know, help us acquire anything with a structure on it. And as those who are more attuned to this issue, issue or the property in question knows that there are several structures on the site. So even before any kind of acquisition would take place, the site would be, need to be demoed. Which, you know, would come with, you know, consequences of them demolishing those buildings. Another thing would be, you know, in terms of the acquisition, they would help us write grants for the very same programs that, you know, I mentioned. They would help facilitate and possibly contribute to it. But, you know, unfortunately, you know, in my professional opinion, although this is a great piece of property, the price range that, you know, we would put in for any grant, given the size of it, would not make it as competitive as other grant applications from other parts of the state for state programs. Cause state grant programs are where the money's at in terms of large dollars. And, you know, the, those open space grant programs are talking, you know, 50 acres in northeastern PA or, you know, out west. You know, five, eight, you know, 4.7 acres at 2 million. Although, you know, everyone has the best intentions from a grant purposes, it, it won't really, you know, stand up to, you know, preserving 50 acres in northern Pennsylvania.
Brandon, I thought as well that you did it to Ellen's point about sort of the, the audit piece. We're engaging them on a consulting basis for, you know, specific township assets. Was that part of the discussion as well? And then the, the Greenways Trails and Recreation Program Grant. Was that the one that we referenced prior or is that something that's still being explored that could potentially be used?
That is something that could still be used. I don't want to, you know, count our chickens before they hatch. But we did put in a Greenways Trails grant that the state has informed me that we will be in consideration for next month. So we might, you know, very well be awarded for that. But that would be for Cisco. And, you know, if we win something from last year, you know, applying for it this year, you know, decreases our, our viability as a, you know, back to back winners, you know.
So I, I still would like to request that the board consider meeting with them and just talking because there's so much to learn about what they do then. And I learned that they do offer a matching grant on replacing community pools. I had no idea they did that. They also can bring people in who are part, who will work with them in developing business plans. And I was thinking that that would be terrific for the Flower Town Country Club. There's just so much there as a resource and I've, over time have heard that there are, these are related problems that the board's been dealing with. So I'd like to make that recommendation to the board. Thanks.
Thanks. We'll definitely take that, you know, under consideration. And, you know, we have to, you know, as I said, we're, our comprehensive plan's coming up and, and we have to, you know, survey all of the, the, our pieces and combo the plan anyway. So that's a good suggestion.
Mr. President, should we poll the audience if, in case we have any billionaires out here who would like?
Yeah, no.
Well, I see three hands raised. We have three.
Baird, who would you like to, to hear from next?
Patrick, go ahead, Patrick. Patrick was next.
Yep. Go ahead, Patrick.
Yeah, thank you. Now, I'm, I'm right on top of my microphone, so if I seem loud, I am not yelling. So thank you for allowing me the chance to comment. So while I, I heard my name mentioned, and so while I concur with Mr. Standish's basic outline of events from Monday night, I definitely dispute some of the characterizations and for sure, some of the chronology of how that conversation unfolded. So my first comment is that I, I would like to say that all commissioner meetings, the business meeting as, as well as the workshop meeting on Mondays, that should be recorded and that should be posted for public view, including this week's workshop and business meetings. I think there's great public interest in it. Now, if you could post a one-hour business meeting on Zoom, you know, where you essentially debate very, very little, then you could definitely post a three-hour workshop meeting where real discussions happen. So, I mean, I think that's important for the community for transparency. And I, you know, I would like to see that happen. Now, second, you're gonna have to stay with me for the content of this one here for, for just a second. Now, this board, I believe, needs to go about and do the work of adopting a code of ethics that compels the disclosure of possible conflicts or possible connections. Now, if you closed your ears after that sentence, you know, you might take it as an insult or you might take that as an accusation, but that is not what I'm saying. Okay, you know, when you, if you were to adopt a code of ethics, you know, encouraging disclosure of any possible conflict like that, you know, that is, what that's doing is protecting the board against accusations. You know, accusation rumors start on social media and, you know, rumors start out in the community. Sometimes they're based on, you know, scanned evidence, sometimes they're based on solid evidence, you know. But if there were a real robust code of ethics that were put in place, that protects you as elected officials. And, you know, the community deserves that type of transparency. Again, it's about transparency. Now, I, I am aware that Laura Marion has adopted a code of ethics. I'm not sure if our solicitor is aware of that. However, you know, you know, Springfield should, should adopt this as well. And there really should not be any more delay. You know, we want our community, which is a great community, which you love and I love and all of us love. And now, we want, we want to have ethical standards that are, that are the highest possible, the most stringent. And then we can all be proud, like, hey, we are doing it better than any other community out there. So third, you know, this is gonna be another tough one to hear. You know, I'm, I am curious, as I, as I look to this wall of six, you know, six very long-tenured commissioners. I'm just wondering, you know, what it is that keeps you running for office again and again and again. Like, I'm just, I am curious as to what it is that you can accomplish in one or two terms. I am curious as to why you would sit on a board for 20 years. I mean, there are other ways to get involved in the community, as you know. And, you know, I, you know, while I appreciate your work and I appreciate your effort and it is largely thankless, I also would really like this board to, to get more diversity, diversity of gender, of race, of circumstance. And that is one of the things I am hoping to see. Now, finally, you know, I, you know, I have attended, I've lived in the community for 14 years and I have attended dozens of commissioner meetings and I've probably attended a hundred environmental committee meetings. And I've also attended a dozen, a few dozen planning commission meetings, maybe a shade tree commission once or twice. And I have to say that the only, the only meetings where townships, where township residents have been yelled at and denigrated have been meetings where Commissioner Standish has been present. And, you know, it, it's, it's, it only recently occurred to me that that is the common denominator. And so I, I, I don't believe it's a one-time occurrence. So I am, I am concerned about an atmosphere of, of privilege. I'm concerned about some sort of toxic entitlement. And it really is my hope, and this is my observation, but it is my hope and it's my, my, my true hope that he reflects on, on just that he becomes more sensitive and that he would refrain from yelling at residents or, or denigrating their comments. So I think that's about.
If I could just make a comment, I, I understand where you're, I, I remember the point where you made on the planning commission, there was some, some debate and our, and you, you, you said that our zoning hearing officer had, was rude to somebody. However, I didn't shout at anybody and I don't ever recall shouting anybody at any meeting. So I don't know why you think that, but I don't ever recall doing that.
I'm concerned about the culture. And honestly, it, it's really the only, the only meetings where residents are made to feel that, this is my observation, the only meetings where residents are made to feel stupid or that they don't know what's going on or that, you know, hey, we're, we're the professionals, we'll take care of it. It's my observation that, that you're, you're the person that is always in attendance at those meetings. It's a, it's a concern for tone at the top.
Okay, so Patrick, I'll tell you what, why don't we, why don't you and I get together and you, and we can talk about how we might go about that? And I gotta tell you, it's, planning is a kind of a, an arcane and, and technical kind of a procedure. And when you say that it, that people don't understand it, that you're right, they don't understand it. You know, it's, it takes a long time to figure out what these codes are and, and what you are allowed to do and what you're not allowed to do. And I'm sorry if people get heated, I, I haven't noticed that as much as you had. I mean, I, frankly, you know, I, we don't get a lot of attendance from people in planning meetings, particularly when we're reviewing ordinances, people just are just not too excited about, you know, reviewing definitions. You know, we spend 20 minutes deciding whether or not, you know, an audi auditorium slash theater should be spelled auditorium hyphen theater or slash theater or just auditorium or just theater. I mean, that's the kind of stuff we're getting into and it's just not stuff that people care about. But I do understand when we're talking about, as an example, Enfield School or something like that, where people are getting heated and everybody, and you have different, you know, factions. You know, and I can understand that, you know, it's sort of, you know, you want to encourage, you know, a healthy debate. So, you know.
I, I.
But I'm the liaison, I'm not, I'm not, but I'm also not the chairman of, of the, of the, of it. And I'm just the liaison, I'm there to sort of, I'm not the referee, I'm there to kind of advise them on what the Board of Commissioners wants them to do, but I'm kind of a witness, I don't have a vote. You know, I don't run the meeting and I don't set the agenda or any of that sort of thing, so, you know.
I, I, I hear what you're saying, however, you are the chairperson of the Board of Commissioners and there has to be accountability from the top. The tone, the tone is set at the top. But so, I mean, my comments are largely done. I was hoping that one or more of, of the Commissioners would make a motion or a resolution or come to an agreement, however you have to do it, so that you start recording and posting all of the commissioner meetings, the workshop meeting and the business meeting and make that the permanent policy. So I'm hoping that one of the Commissioners or, or multiple Commissioners will, will do that. And, and that's it, I appreciate the time.
Okay, I will promise you, I will, I'll talk to Mandy Helwig about, she's the chairman of the planning commission, I'll, I'll talk to her about this. I understand where you're coming from and, and, you know, historical commission, honestly, we have, I mean, except for Chris Webb, I don't know if we've ever had anybody else on the, on our calls. But, you know, I'll talk to Scott about that too, though. And, you know, and we'll make more concerted effort because I understand where you're coming from. So, and, and as far as, you know, the, as far as dealing with the, you know, posting the, the videos, I mean, that may be something that we can do. I, I don't know, you know, there's some issues, it's not on our agenda tonight. It's not, it's not a vote that, that I think we would want to do, I think we'd want to have a discussion about that. We could certainly have a discussion about that at our next workshop, if anybody wants to do that. So I don't know what the costs involved are, I know that Mike shared some of that. It, it's, it's not inexpensive to do that sort of thing, but I don't know all the, I don't know.
It's expensive when we do the video.
Yeah, it's expensive when you do the video, right.
We're not doing videos anytime soon.
Why don't we plan on having that be an agenda item?
Yeah, let's do that.
Next month.
So let's do that.
Time on, on posting the videos and as well as having more of the materials in advance of the meeting that maybe the public can review, I think it'd be, it'd be a good discussion to have.
Yeah, and that, and that's the other thing, and that's the other issue with the planning commission is that, you know, we have, we have, we're dealing with the wild card is the county where they, they write up a lot of the, the documentation that we get to review in planning and it, it actually shows up, you know, sometimes, you know, that afternoon. It's just not, it's, it's, they're not super fast on the draw, you know, so, anyway.
All right, and don't forget that code of ethics, that is what's gonna make us.
We can do that, and I, you know, again.
That's gonna protect you.
That's fine, and again, if you, if you, I, I can go research it myself, but if you have the, the, you know, the copy from Laura Marion, I'd be happy to review it, I mean, I, I'd welcome that, actually, so.
Excuse me, Mr. President, if I may, I, I believe that every year we have to sign a financial statement outlining exactly what all commissioners are involved in financially.
We do.
Make sure that there is no contact, no conduct of being inappropriate.
Right.
In any of those things, and that's done, I think it's done every two years or every year. I, I just got mine again this year, how often?
Yeah, I just got, I just got one too, yeah, so.
Andy, it's, it's annual and you're all, it's annual and you're all bound by the Pennsylvania Public Official and Employee Ethics Act.
Exactly, so I believe, or it is my belief, that what, that statement that goes out every year answers all codes of ethics that this board is bound by. Thank you.
Well, let's, let, we, I, I appreciate that comment, Mr. Graham. You know, let's do some research, let's make ours the toughest and the best. And we also have to extend it to the, the volunteers that serve on, on critical boards as well. I'm not really worried about a shade tree conflict. However, I, I think it's good policy to extend it to volunteers serving on boards. You know, maybe there's a conflict, they disclose it and then business moves on, no problem. But we, we, you know, there's no excuse why, there's no excuse why we can't be the best.
I'm a little confused about the toughest and the best because it's a state form that we all have to fill out yearly. So it's, it's a state statute that gives the guidelines for that, as you call it, the code of ethics. So I, I don't know how we can make it the toughest and the best when it's regulated by the state.
I, we could extend it, number one, to, as a policy, extend it to people serving on volunteer boards like the planning commission, like the zoning commission. And not that there's volunteers on that, but there is a liaison from the Commissioners, anyway.
Mr. President, may I?
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
Would it, would it be worth asking Mr. Garrity just to briefly talk about how that relates to the State Act? In terms of, of our, any conflict of interest and how that works?
Sure.
And especially how, how, how it would affect people that want to volunteer to serve on these boards.
There, there is definitely a State Act, the, the responses that you Commissioners give to that State Act are a matter of public record. There, anybody can see them anytime they want. The question is whether the volunteers are considered public officials. Mike would know, I guess, how many, my Taylor, that is, would know how many of those forms go out to our other boards. But you, you would not be able to exceed the State Act because I, I'm not sure what the, you know, what the violation would be at any point. This, the State Act is the State Act. And if you, and if you breach, or if you break that law, you're subject to punishment. With regard to a private ethics code, I, I'm not even sure something like that would apply. And if anybody was accused of violating it, I think they could challenge it on the basis that the, the state has already preempted that area. But, you know, these are things that would require a little bit of further research. But off the top of my head, there is a State Act, the State Act's very clear. You all have to fill out a financial interest form every single year, I believe, and it's all a public record.
And also that, that financial statement, all of that is covered on the, under the Pennsylvania Public Official and Employee Ethics Act.
Yes, sir.
So that is the, the ethics that this board adheres to is under that Ethics Act under, under the state of Pennsylvania. So we do adhere to that and there's one already in existence. And if I may ask, I, once we vote, I think that the, that Ethics Act, if you can place it on our website, put that link on there, you can just click it and you'll see exactly how this Board of Commissioner adheres to that Pennsylvania ethics code on a yearly basis when we fill out, fill out our financial statement. Thank you.
The kid, or ticket.
That is correct, and by the way, that, that act includes me too.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, let me see, who's next, I think Chris Webb was next on the list.
Hi.
Hi.
Thanks for taking my question. So this is just a request for clarification regarding Agenda Item 10, making the Paper Mill Road and Eden Road intersection always stop intersection. To be clear, I'm not asking about Agenda Item Number Nine, just 10. Do I correctly or incorrectly recall from prior discussion in past months that stop signs are not a valid warrant by the state to remedy speed reduction or speed concerns? Or do I remember that totally incorrectly?
No, they're not supposed to regulate speed, that's not what they're there for.
Is Agenda Item Number 10 is the addition of, or the making that an always stop intersection speed relate?
Mr. Taylor, could I answer that question? On my agenda, first of all, that four-way stop is number 11. Okay, which, which doesn't, which doesn't really matter, but to answer Mr. Webb's question, you cannot put up, you cannot put up stop signs without PennDOT's permission. And PennDOT will not permit the use of stop signs to regulate speeds. They will permit the use of stop signs if you provide other warrants. And I believe it is those other warrants that have been found in this particular case. But we, if we told PennDOT that we are simply putting up stop signs to lower speed, they would refuse us permission to lower, to put up the stop signs.
Refresh my memory, if I didn't pick it up from Monday night's discussion, what, what the other warrants were?
It was, it was a sightline issue.
Okay, thank you, all right, I, I do recall that now and didn't get the connection. And I, I think it depends on when you downloaded or when I downloaded the agenda from the website, so.
Yes, sir, you are correct.
Okay, so.
Because I was, it was revised this afternoon, so.
Okay, all right, so thank you very much for making that clarification, I really appreciate the time.
Okay, all right, Richard Metz, well, I think was next on the, on the, on the list there.
Go ahead, Richard.
So, um, it's been frustrating and embarrassing to me that the township couldn't figure out or didn't have the will to purchase the property on, on Hawes Lane as a park for all the residents. My strong concern is to preserve all the woods at the back of the property. This will be a large buffer, it's aesthetically beautiful for both the school and any new residents. It will continue to be an important home for birds and animals. You'll preserve mature trees, improve runoff, it's carbon storage, you keep out, and you keep our neighborhoods feeling healthy and. It's carbon storage. You keep out and you keep our neighborhoods feeling healthy and green. This is a 100 foot by 600 foot approximately woods. It has 60 to 75 foot tall trees. Many of them are about three feet in diameter. There are vernal pools in there. Springfield has lost a lot of green space already. Uh, and I, you know, I think about even like the name Springfield. It should mean something. It should, and even where I live in Erdentheim, that means earth home. Uh, it should mean some kind of commitment to preserving the planet, not developing every square inch of it. Our area, uh, both in the city and in the suburbs around has seen a glut of these townhouse developments. If you listen to people in Mount Airy or Roxboro, all, all over, all these townhouse developments are coming in. This is a hot housing market, but it really shows a lack of concern here for overbuilding, overcrowding and the community values. Consider even the traffic problems of having 40 more families and 80 more cars on Hawes Lane trying to exit Church Road. In my opinion, I think our community can handle, you know, six more family homes or maybe, maybe 20 attached units. There'll be less parking needed. There'll be less impervious cover. Uh, the woods in the back can be preserved. Uh, like when you destroy all the trees and you plant a few new ones, you've destroyed the whole ecosystem. And you basically, as they say, you've, you've made it a parking lot. All the mature trees will be gone. The whole root systems that have developed are gone. Uh, it's just a real lack of respect for nature. And it's only a concern for the profit of the developer. I understand the developers paid a lot of money for the property. But they didn't have to do that. Yeah. Um, and it's just not a sustainable way for our community to move forward. So revitalizing our community and confronting climate change. Uh, I think it need, it needs to start all over with zoning codes. The basic idea here is that, as many people have said, we can't prevent development. So what I'm saying is I would like the Board of Commissioners to task the zoning board and the planning board to come up with an environmental provision in the zoning code. I'm asking this because, uh, this is the only way to start to halt the loss of green space in our community.
Okay. Thank you. So let me just make a, just a, a quick comment about that. And again, this is sort of down the road because we, the planning commission has been deeply involved with a new parking ordinance and they've been, you know, dealing with a lot of other things. But, um, one of the, one of the things on the horizon is the suggestion a couple of years ago, and I've been sort of pushing this a little bit is, you know, in, in Springfield, we have something like 27 separate zoning districts.
Right. I, I saw the map. Yeah.
Yeah, it's crazy. And, and, uh, the, the, um, the county apparently has successfully worked with other townships to reduce those, uh, the number of, uh, zoning districts and also revise them so that they're, you know, for like a better word, more modern, you know, you know, achieve, you know, more modern goals, that sort of thing. And, you know, and, uh, you know, we could theoretically even get it down to six zoning, zoning districts. I mean, that's, that was a number that was sort of thrown out though. I don't know if that's, if that's, uh, possible, but, but that's on our radar and it may take a few years to get there. But it is on our radar. So, and it has been, so, you know.
I think it's really about, um, there's no protection of the environment in the zoning codes. There's a little bit of cluster housing.
Yeah.
A suggestion of open space. Uh, there's also really no, uh, framework for the will of the community in the zoning code. Now, I, I know this is a larger issue, but if you're going to really challenge green space issues, you really have to change the law. Because everybody says, well, we can't do anything because that's the law. That's by right. And so what I'm saying is let's think future-wise to change that zoning code.
I would agree with you, or you have to devise, you know, uh, complicated overlays or, you know, conditional uses and all that other kind of stuff. And it, it gets, gets complicated. I mean, you know, right?
Okay.
And it certainly gets costly from a legal perspective too.
Right.
Oh, yeah.
Rezone someone and lower their value. That's a, that's a lawsuit we're going to lose.
If you were to create, you know, yeah. So it's just working with the zoning code. So you don't have these lawsuits.
Right.
But the sentiments, Richard, um, I agree with and, and we need more people that
Yeah.
to think like you and value that. And, uh,
Yeah.
with more of that support, you know, this stuff's more possible.
Yep.
Well, I, I hope it translates into, uh, a way to actually preserve piece by piece more green space now in Springfield Township.
Yeah. And that ties into what Ellen had proposed and asked us to look into as far as the audit.
Yep.
Right. And, and by the way, just, you know, to, to, uh, Patrick Edison's point of like, why would somebody want to do this for 20 years? You know, this is why I'd want to do this for 20 years because it hasn't happened yet. You know, when I was in planning school, you know, that they, somebody said, you know, the most frustrating people in the world are planners because they never see what they're working on ever get done. I'd like to see some of this get done, you know? So there's one reason why I like doing this.
Good.
So here we go.
Thank you.
Okay. Let me think. Kelly King, I think you were next.
Hey, thank you. Um, I just have a question. I think it's in relation to Monday and therefore I think it's relevant for the agenda. Otherwise I can stay on and ask. Um, I know Patrick had said, um, and asked to request the, uh, recordings be made accessible to the public. And I agree with that. But I wanted to take it a step further. And I was wondering if the board would be interested in considering keeping the, um, Zoom or another access platform when you do return to in-person, because this makes it, you know, far more accessible to residents who are interested in being involved in these meetings. And therefore I would like to see that continue. Um, I'm learning a ton. I would like to continue to do so. And it would be much more challenging for many residents to get there each Monday and Wednesday night when you meet rather than being able to log in on this platform. So if you could consider that, I would appreciate it.
We will consider it. Okay.
The whole world of remoteness is never.
Yeah. This is all, yeah, new, yeah, right. Yeah.
But if we do consider, we definitely have to give extra credit for people who come live. There's gotta be some like donuts or something.
Right.
Baird, if I could just jump in real quick, uh, you know, the, the whole reason we're allowed to do virtual meetings and, you know, I, I invite, uh, the solicitor or even, you know, Mike to kind of jump in as well. Uh, the whole reason we're allowed to do virtual meetings is because the state specifically allowed us to.
Oh, yeah.
Prior to the pandemic, uh, these type of meetings were strictly not allowed by the state. And the state could, you know, say tomorrow, no more virtual meetings and we would have to adhere. So.
Hard to believe they would do that, but I mean, they could, yeah.
The state can do what they, they.
They not only can, they will.
You think so? Okay.
Absolutely. That doesn't, that doesn't mean, you know, we can't film meetings, but that has other issues related to cost and
Yeah.
arrangements and everything, but absolutely public meetings are meant to be face-to-face. And they will be again.
All right.
But it is a good point. And, and I guess i- if we can add that to the agenda item for next month's workshop, when we talk about, sort of getting these meetings out and transparency is just sort of, I guess, you know, we used to record them over audio tapes. There should be no reason why we can't record them in some sort of video fashion and have that posted immediately. So.
Jim, could, um, the, the in-person requirement, could, could you still live stream that necessarily take questions from remotely? But could you live stream it?
Details.
Yeah, the, the public could probably attend in a lot of different ways, uh, but the commissioners have to be in the building.
Yeah.
Or will have to be in the building, not at the moment.
Yeah. And I, I think Ms. King was implying that even if we're live, give people an option to log in and watch from home.
I understand.
Think. Correct me if I'm wrong.
You mean, we're not going to be able to just sell our building and get our money back? Okay. So I don't know. If it's, if that's Bonnie or her father on, because I see Mr. Davis, but then I see Bonnie's picture. So.
Say hello, Dad.
Hello.
Oh, hi. Oh, you're, oh, you're both there. Okay.
Thank you for the, uh, award and I hope that, uh, everybody, uh, has enjoyed my services. My kids, I loved every one of them and they were just super. We had a few, uh, minor incidences over the years, but in total, we had no, no childhood on my corner. And it is, it is fun to look today and see the same children that I crossed when I first started going to college or have been in college a year or so. And I just want to thank the police for their cooperation and the, all the, all the parents that were mostly a hundred percent behind me and the children were great. And we see the best when we see the children, uh, tell the parents not to cross. Okay. Thank you very much.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Davis.
You are going to be thoroughly missed, Mr. Davis.
Yeah.
You ran a tight ship with that corner.
Okay. So I think next was, is Poppy and JoJo.
What about Betsy?
I see Betsy. Well, I'm trying to.
I, I apologize for the name. Uh, that's a name my wife and I use for our daughters on the West Coast. My name, my name is Michael and, uh, my wife and I have been residents of Hawes Lane for 35 years. My question, and it's just a clarification right now, it relates to the Hawes Lane property. Uh, earlier in the meeting, Commissioner Cobb mentioned something that kind of sparked a thought in my mind. Before the pandemic, um, I believe there was a meeting, uh, one of the commission meetings, and there was a request by the public at the meeting to have the, some of the commissioners or someone representing the commissioners meet with the school district about the property as to potential either joint buying, one of the two buying with the school district maybe down the road want to expand and they, they'd have the property. Commissioner Cobb, I know you touched on this earlier, but I didn't hear, did the school district basically say, nah, we're not interested? Or what was the result of the conversation related to that property?
There were multiple conversations, um, that, uh, many of us had. And for the most part, uh, the school district, I think was, was very, their plate was full with, with their expansion projects with the new development of the new schools, um, that they, they did pass on it.
Okay. Uh, and I assume that, and I have many other comments about the property. I assume that they're best properly kept for the planning commission on May 4th. Without, is that correct?
That is. We, we will have a meeting on May 4th. I mean, we're just gonna, it's, it's, it's just going to be, you know, they will show up, they'll present their plan. The public shows up. Anybody that wants to make any comment at all or ask any questions or whatever, we'll, we'll be doing it. Um.
Michael, you can share it here too. I mean, we're.
I, I, I think Mr. Metz made some comments I thought that were very appropriate a few minutes ago. I, I clearly believe that putting more traffic, which anything in there in that property is going to do on Hawes Lane. As I said, I've lived here for 35 years on this street. I've seen changes and there's a lot of great changes in this township and in this area.
Yeah.
Our, 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 our green space is going away. And I, I really believe that we have to dig into our pockets a little and maybe even with the school district, because the school district built two brand new schools. And myself and everybody else lives around here has more increase in taxes to pay for it. So why don't we do something with this space and, and everybody have to pay for it a little? Because that's what happens when you need something. I believe the developers here are just people in the area who are just trying to make another buck. I'm sorry to say that, but, but they are. And I guess that's what they're about.
That's what they're in business for. Yeah.
The fact that they're using their business address over at the Flower Town Country Club tells us exactly who they are. And we know they're businessmen in the area. Okay. I, I just think we need to work harder at trying not to build on the space and doing something else. And I, and I, I think we have issues on, all kinds of issues in the infrastructure of the streets in the area, specifically Hawes Lane. I live downhill from that and there have been problems downhill on occasions and, and things just back up. We're just adding more into the sewer system. We're adding more traffic onto a road. If you happen to go out and watch it, I know most of you gentlemen and, and people live, uh, maybe don't sit and watch traffic occasionally. I do since I'm retired. But there's a lot of traffic on Hawes Lane already and all we're going to do is add to it.
Right. And well, that'll be the opportunity to ask all those questions, you know?
Thank you.
And they should have the answers to that too. They should be, you know, providing information about that.
Thank you. And I appreciate the time to comment today. Thank you.
Okay. So Betsy, go ahead.
Hold on. Michael, can I get your last name just for the minutes, please?
Sure. Uh, V as in Victor, A R, Z as in zebra, A L L Y, 120 Hawes Lane. Love the area.
Thank you, Mr. Barzagli.
Welcome.
Okay. So Betsy Wallace, go ahead.
Yeah, I just had a quick question for, uh, Mr. Garrity. It goes back to the code of ethics. Just wanted to make sure, um, we're clear on this, that, um, I understand that if, if the Board of Commissioners would adopt a less stringent code of ethics than the P A Act, that would, that would be problematic. But if they adopted a more stringent code of ethics than what the P A Act, uh, requires, I, I, would the P A Act consider that, would the state consider that to be a violation?
I, I don't know, Betsy, that the, the state would consider it a violation. It's simply that, uh, the, the question of enforcement would, would raise its head because the state can only enforce the state law. And if we put in something more, uh, strict than the state law, then we'd have to figure out how we would go about enforcing it. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I'm just, you know, I'm relating it to how it works on the federal level. When the feds have taken over, um, you know, you know, and I know, you know, in, in law that if the feds have taken, occupied a certain field, that no state could impose anything, could go below those standards, like for instance, car emissions. But if, um, if a, a, an entity decides to be more stringent, then, uh, federal law wouldn't prevent them from doing that.
That is correct, Betsy, but the state has a mechanism for enforcement. The question is, does Springfield township?
Jim, could there be something that's just out of the scope? It's not necessarily more stringent. It's just something that the state doesn't have. Would that be considered exceeding or being more strict?
To be honest, Jim, most of the ethics codes that I have seen are simply explain the state law.
Okay.
Um, and put it into, uh, and, and everyone needs to remember too, that the, the state law deals with financial interests solely and nothing else.
Okay. So maybe, um, maybe when, um, Baird and, um, Patrick look at the Lower Marion Township Code of Ethics, they'll, you know, that they'll become clear what, whether that was just a restatement of the P A Act or not.
Correct. I think, as I recall, that, that the Lower Marion, um, code goes into things like nepotism and all kinds of stuff. And, you know, the, the question is whether Springfield wants to get in, into the weeds, uh, that deeply. And that's up to Springfield.
Yeah. Okay. Thanks.
Yep.
Okay. Uh, I don't see any other hands. So, uh, and we have no, we, we, we had no emails, Brandon. Is that right? No questions? Okay. Great. All right. So why don't we move on then to the committee reports and, if somebody has any more questions, we'll have another open session at the end of this. See, um, and I'll make the first report. This is concerning the Sandy Run Country Club. In compliance with section 512.1 of the Pennsylvania Municipalities Planning Code, I move that the Board of Commissioners waive the formal land development review process for Sandy Run Country Club 200 Valley Green Road, Orland. The subject of the land development is the construction of a 420 square foot patio enclosure located to the rear of the existing clubhouse. The waiver is conditioned upon the club cooperating with Springfield Township to perform stormwater management improvements on the golf course to resolve longstanding drainage problems experienced by the residents of the 400 block of Burton Road as outlined in a letter dated March 10th, 2021 from John Livinggood, president of Sandy Run Country Club to Springfield Township. So that is my, so that's my motion. And do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Thank you. Um, all in favor? First, any comments or questions on the motion? All right.
Mr. President, I'd just like to make a, a quick comment on that. I just wanted to express my pleasure that the club is, we've been willing to work with the township on seeking to resolve the, the stormwater runoff for the residents of Burton Road. It, it really is appreciative and hope that we'll see some, some true benefit come out of that.
Yep. Okay, so a motion has been made and a second, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Please record unanimous vote. Okay, next we'll move on to the Commissioner Harbison, who is the chairman of, what, what is he, oh, he is the chairman of the Internal Affairs and Library Committees.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two matters. First, the bill listing, I move that the board of commissioners approve the March check reconciliation in the amount of four hundred and twenty nine thousand, four hundred and ninety one dollars and twenty four cents. In the April bill listing, in the amount of eight hundred and thirty three thousand, four hundred and twenty seven dollars and thirty eight cents. That is my motion.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Thank you. Any questions or comments on the motion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Please record unanimous vote.
Moving on to resolution one five three one, earlier this year, the Internal Revenue Service extended the tax filing date for twenty twenty personal income taxes to May seventeen, twenty twenty one. In accordance with state law, the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania subsequently extended the filing date for state income taxes as well. Since most individuals and businesses prepare and file their federal, state and local taxes simultaneously, it is the desire of the board of commissioners to extend the tax filing deadline for the payment of all twenty twenty local enabling taxes. Therefore, I move that the board of commissioners adopt resolution number one five three one, a resolution waiving any fees or penalties associated with the filing and or payment of twenty twenty local earned income taxes, local service taxes, business privilege taxes and mercantile taxes if filed and paid in full by May seventeen, twenty twenty one. That is my motion.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Okay.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on the motion? And I'll make just one point, this does not include real estate taxes, so that's very clear. These are all the other things, but, you know, you still have to pay your real estate taxes on time, so. Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Please record unanimous vote.
And one other admonition, in addition to not including real estate taxes, if you pay quarterly estimates, those are not extended and those are due tomorrow. And that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Harbison. Next, we will move to the chairman of our Cultural and Environmental Resource Committee, Commissioner Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a, a report and a motion. My report is on recycling, and I'm pleased to report that during the month of March twenty twenty one, Springfield Township residents recycled two hundred and seven point nine one tons of materials with a household participation rate of seventy nine point two percent. The net cost for the month was twenty six thousand, nine hundred and forty one dollars and forty six cents. My motion is regarding the Environmental Advisory Commission. I move that the board of commissioners appoint Melissa Brooks of Windmore as an associate member of the Springfield Township Environmental Advisory Commission. An associate member, as, associate members do not have voting privileges but are encouraged to attend and participate in all meetings of the commission. Associate members are also assist with educational programs, research and special assignments. When the vacancy occurs on the commission, the board typically taps an associate member to fill the vacancy based upon their experience and environmental interest. Ms. Brooks has been especially helpful with our E A C as we prepare the Ready for One Hundred program, which is again, is our transition to clean energy for the township. That is my motion.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on the motion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Okay, please record unanimous vote.
That concludes my report, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Wilson. Okay, next we will move on to the chairman of Parks and Recreational Resources Committee, Commissioner Graham.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I just have one announcement. On Saturday, April twenty fourth, from ten a.m. to two p.m., the Springfield Township Police Department will accept all unwanted prescriptions and over the counter medications as part of Drug Take Back Day. The event is organized by the Montgomery County District Attorney's Office and the Police Chiefs Association of Montgomery County. And it coincides with the Drug Enforcement Agency's National Drug Take Back Day. Items that are acceptable for collection include prescriptions and over the counter tablets and capsules, inhalers, creams, ointments, nasal spray, pet medications and vaping products. Please do not bring needles and intravenous, interject, uh, injectable solutions for disposable, for disposal. As part of the Drug Take Back Event, the Springfield Township Opioid Action Committee, or STOAC, will be accepting donations of gently used clothing and clothing and will be offering Narcan kits on a first come, first served basis. Each kit includes a two pack of Narcan nasal spray and instructions on how to administer Narcan and recognize the signs of opioid overdose. Narcan is a medication designed to rapidly reverse opioid overdose that can restore normal respirations to a person whose breathing has slowed or stopped as a result of overdosing with heroin or prescription opioid pain medication. That is my announcement, but I also, before turning the floor back to you, Mr. President, I'd like to thank the Springfield Township Opioid Action Committee for their Narcan giveaway two Saturdays ago, on March the twenty seventh, that was held at the old library on Willow Grove Avenue. It was a successful giveaway, it was attended, well attended, and I believe we gave out a total of forty seven Narcan kits, which was phenomenal. And I just want to thank all of the committee members of STOAC for the work that they do in addressing this opioid epidemic that is really, really just, the word I'm looking for, I can't really think of it right now, but it's really being felt because of the pandemic. And so just thank you to all of those committee members for all of the work that you do. That is my report, Mr. President, and thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Graham. Okay, so normally Commissioner Maxwell, the chairman of the Public Safety Committee, would read his report, but because he's having some dental issues, Commissioner Lee, who is the chairman of our Public Works and Facilities Committee, will read Commissioner Maxwell's report. And Jim, if you wanted then, just go right into your report and just go right through the end of that, we can just do that, too.
All right, buckle up, because there's a lot of items.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you, Mr. President. Do you want me to delineate? You want me to do my Mike Maxwell?
Yeah, why not? Yeah, just, yeah, just let us know, yep.
All right, I'll do my Mike Maxwell voice for the first. Uh, first, regarding the paper mill road speed limit, I move that the board of commissioners amend the Springfield Township Code one oh seven dash twenty four, Schedule One, Speed Limits by establishing a speed limit twenty five miles per hour on Paper Mill Road from Church Road to Golf Road. That is my motion.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Great.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, please sing.
Wait, wait, Baird.
Sorry, yeah, I'm sorry, we're gonna take some comments or questions, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I have a comment.
Yes, go ahead, yep.
This was brought up to us as a potentially lowered speed limit and we did the responsible thing of hiring a traffic engineer who then came back and recommended, as I read it, the four way stop. And what we are now doing is both, and I feel that that is not consist, it's not inconsistent, but it's not what was recommended. I will vote for the four way stop, but I'm voting against this because I think when we spend the money for the traffic engineer, we should do what they recommend. So I'm voting no.
I would, Mr. President, I would second Jeff's comments there.
Mr. President, I just would like to add that what I appreciated was the residents who live along the street and have to deal with it on a daily basis came out in, in considerable numbers and were pretty unanimous in requesting a lowering of the speed limit for the safety of their kids and families. So I appreciate the willingness, willingness of this board to listen to residents who actually live along the road and, and making changes that they requested, so. I will be voting for it.
I'd may have come in, too. When we talked with the traffic engineer, and one of the reasons they did not recommend it twenty five miles per hour was the concern of people being used to the existing speed limit and enforcement being a problem. When I asked her, the hypothetical, if you were opening this road for the first time, would you recommend that it was twenty five miles per hour? And she did say that she would, so. I think it's the right move.
But the flip side of that was, when it was opened for the first time, it was thirty five miles an hour. And with the, with the ten mile an hour cushion and with the report clearly showing that there wasn't substantial speeding on, on the road, I, I see no advantage to reducing the speed limit.
Um, just, I just wanted to put my comments in for the record. I think that the neighbors that live along, that they are the ones that observe the traffic, the speeding along the way, they live there, we just kind of visit there. And I think that as part of a democracy, we listen to them and I think that they have a right to request of this board to help support them in addressing their safety issues. Regardless of a traffic safety issue that may not support what they want, they are the ones that live there and they are the ones that are concerned about the safety of their children and of their, you know, people that come to visit them and the residents themselves. So having said that, I am fully in favor of make, of having that stop sign there.
Again, I contend it'll have no effect, which I think was the overall thrust of the traffic engineers' report.
Any more comments or questions or? All right, hearing none, I will take the vote. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Right, I think we have five and nay.
Nay.
Two nays.
I had to make this, Baird.
You worked.
I've never used it. It hit me this afternoon. I won't use it on the stop sign, I promise.
All right, okay, so please record a five to two vote in favor of this motion.
Although it was shorter tonight, you can see why that topic took a lot of time Monday and why Hawes Lane wasn't talked about until around ten o'clock.
Right, and they were gonna have a burn the nay card, you know, ceremony later, right, Jeff?
I still have my two here that I.
The second, second item related, I move that the board of commissioners amend the Springfield Township Code, Section one oh seven twenty eight, Schedule Five, Stop Intersection, Intersection C, authorizing an always stop condition intersection of Paper Mill Road, Eden Road, Orland. And I should note the aforementioned modifications consistent with the recommendations received by the board of commissioners by Sandy Cozer, Professional Traffic Operations Engineer, at the workshop meeting conducted on Monday, April twelfth, twenty twenty one, to remediate site distance deficiencies present at several locations along Paper Mill Road between Church Road and Golf Road. That is my motion.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, great. Any questions or comments? Nope, okay, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote.
Next item, Mr. President, I move that the board of commissioners award a contract to McMahon Associates Incorporated, transportation engineers and planners of Fort Washington, Pennsylvania, to complete Phase One School Zone Speed Study and Phase Two School Zone Flasher Design to facilitate the installation of School Zone Warning Signals for the new Enfield Elementary School, Paper Mill Road and Montgomery Avenue. Fee for services for Phase One is four thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars and Phase Two is nine thousand, three hundred dollars. Phase Two shall only proceed if the results of Phase One determine that warning signals are indeed warranted. The cost of all work shall be reimbursed by the school district of Springfield Township pursuant to the land development approvals for the new elementary school. That is my motion.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Great. Any questions or comments on this motion?
I, I have a question and comment, Mr. President. There's, they're very similar to the ones that I made on Monday night. I would request that the scope of this traffic study be, be inclusive of the feeder roads that lead on to Bethlehem Pike. I, and for simplistic, to make it as simple as possible, I think we have to study the corridor, corridor that, that runs at least a mile from the, this location at Montgomery and, and Paper Mill. And the effect that that, that traffic signal is going to have on those neighborhoods, especially for the residents trying to exit onto Paper Mill Road from Carlisle Road, Skyline Drive, Feral Road, Suede Road, Fraser Road, Preston Road, Harston Lane, Bell's Mills and Sheltonham. So that's my additional comment.
Okay, great. So I think the, the motion just covers awarding the contract, but I think staff can, can inform our traffic engineer as to what they are, what the emphasis is going to be and, and we'll incorporate that. Is that, is that right, Mike?
Yeah, we will note, I'll note the concerns regarding the impacts on, on the feeder streets within a mile radius and, and state the, the roads in the immediate vicinity, you know, from Fraser Road out to Bell's Mill Road. The, the, the scope of work does not include a detailed analysis, but we can ask them for their general, you know, observations of what the impact would have on that based upon the volumes that they're gonna obtain, the volume of traffic.
Again, my concern for the people who weren't with us on Monday night is that, you know, a lengthy school closing flashing signal at fifteen miles an hour is gonna take, during the rush hours, is gonna turn Paper Mill Road into a parking lot, so.
Mike, could they come back with a slight cost increase if we ask for that? And if so, do we include the vote to include a buffer so that we don't have to kick this down the road to re-vote?
Yeah, the, the first, it probably won't be impacted in the first phase, it would probably go into the second phase. So let me beg the question of her to, to see what kind of, what impact, if any, it may have on that.
Okay, then you just circulate.
You wanna do it, or do you wanna just do it up to a certain value? You know, like a thousand dollars or two thousand dollars or something like that?
Don't mention it, Jim. Might, let's give it, they might just give it to us for free.
Yeah, I would just, just, just circulate it around if, you know, if, you know, whatever you find out, just let us know and then we'll.
As long as it's under a million, under a million, Mike.
I wasn't gonna mention to her, I just wanted to know if you guys had a, a number in mind that you'd be comfortable with.
Throw in Hawes Lane in there, too.
Tell, tell her we want it for free, that's all. Okay, so that's that, and all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote.
Next item is Resolution fifteen twenty nine regarding the local use of radar. I move that the board of commissioners adopt resolution number fifteen twenty nine, a resolution supporting Pennsylvania House Bill six zero six and Senate Bill four nineteen, authorizing the local use of radar for speed enforcement activities. Pennsylvania is the only state in the country that prohibits municipal police from utilizing radar and lidar, which are considered the safest, most efficient and economical speed timing devices available to law enforcement. Residents are encouraged to contact Representative Napoleon Nelson and Senator Art Haywood to voice their support for the passage of House Bill six oh six and Senate Bill four nineteen respectfully. That is my motion.
Great. Do we have a second?
Second.
Great. Any questions or comments on the motion? And I'll say this is. And I'll say this is, this is, we're we're supporting a a state law, hopefully will be passed. It's not our law, it's not our ordinance. It it's to support a a state ordinance. And hopefully, and this is, this is, they've tried to do this more than once in the past and 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 it's failed and um, for some reason, I don't know, Mike, you know, they they seem to think that they have a a better chance of of success this time than before, but I don't know exactly why that is.
They've included uh, some of the concerns from some of the folks and that have been opposed to it in the past is that governments will utilize the uh, the the use of radar to generate excessive fees through issuance of speeding tickets. And they've put a cap on the amount of money that you can actually generate from the uh, issuance of tickets um, through speed enforcement. So it will never ever in a million years reach the number. Um, it's something like ten percent of your annual budget or your annual revenues. Um, a- and it just, it's not feasible because you only get pennies on the dollar, you know, when you're issuing a speeding ticket. If the speeding ticket total cost is a hundred and fifty dollars, we might get ten to fifteen dollars of it. It's it's a very insignificant amount.
Uh, to to reiterate uh, the point that Commissioner Lee made, um, probably next to stormwater issues, uh, speeding on local roads is probably the the issue that I hear most about. Um, and I know that it has always been a little bit of a hamstring that uh, our our police department has had that they have the inability to uh, use radar uh, to monitor speed. So if this is an issue that is important to residents, they really should be uh, reaching out to state reps to um, encourage them to pass this.
Unless you're a a speeder, then you probably don't want them.
Right. That's right. Unless you have a fast Tesla or something, right?
Red one.
A red one.
They're they're all fast.
They're all, yeah. Okay, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Okay, any any opposed, say nay. Okay, please report, record a unanimous vote.
Last item for Commissioner Maxwell, body worn camera grant. I move that the Board of Commissioners authorize the appropriate township officials to execute a grant agreement with the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency pursuant to the Commission's Body Worn Camera Policy and Implementation Program. Principal purpose of the program is to support the development and implementation of body worn camera programs by police agencies. The value of the grant secured by Springfield Township is thirty-two thousand five hundred dollars. Will be utilized to purchase twenty-nine body worn cameras and associated equipment for the Springfield Township Police Department. Total cost of the body worn camera program is approximately sixty-five thousand dollars. That is my motion.
Great. Do we have a second?
Second.
Great. Any questions or comments on the motion?
The only question I have is the is is our contribution into in this year's budget?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
Great.
And and Mike, these would be available uh, to be implemented when?
Um, depends on how long the lead time is for the securing of the the equipment and getting the the server in place, but certainly before the end of the year, probably sometime in third quarter of this year.
That's great.
Okay, uh, thank you. Uh, let's move along to Commissioner Lee. Thank you, Commissioner Maxwell.
Okay, well, that well, I haven't, we haven't, but we have a vote on this one. Okay, so all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And all opposed, say nay. Okay, please record unanimous vote and we're somewhat related to this, we're getting our electric um, uh, car, our interceptor, you know, pretty soon too. That's the other exciting thing.
It was delivered this week.
Ah, there we go, yeah.
We just.
It's a hybrid, Brett Barrett is a hybrid.
It's a hybrid. I'm sorry, yeah, it's a hybrid, yeah.
We just.
But it'll get double the uh, almost double the gas mileage.
Yep. Yep. So that's great. And we all want to write in it, so. Okay.
Keep keep the speeding up.
Next item, Mr. President, resolution fifteen thirty Arbor Day. I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt the resolution number fifteen thirty, a resolution proclaiming Saturday, May first, twenty twenty-one is Arbor Day in Springfield Township. The Board of Commissioners urges all citizens to join with the Springfield Township Shade Tree Commission to celebrate Arbor Day to support efforts to plant new trees. Due to the COVID nineteen pandemic, you might have heard of it, Shade Tree Commission is unable to conduct this traditional in-person Arbor Day celebration and instead will be participating with the Free Library of Springfield Township to conduct an Arbor Day poster contest to decorate the library. Later this year, the Shade Tree Commission hopes to introduce the Seed Library to the community where residents can contribute, swap and borrow seeds. Additionally, when conditions permit, Shade Tree Commission plans to conduct a tree planting ceremony and tree giveaway. That is my motion.
Great. Do we have a second?
Second.
Great. Any questions or comments on the motion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. Okay, please record a unanimous vote.
Next item, in accordance with section fifteen oh one of the Pennsylvania First Class Township Code, I move that the Board of Commissioners authorize the sale of one twenty-twelve Chevrolet Tahoe via the municipal online public auction site. Vehicle to be auctioned presently is a hundred and nineteen thousand, hundred and twenty-one miles and twenty thousand four hundred hours. Any interested bidders are encouraged to visit www.munisabid.com to place a bid. That is my motion.
Great. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Um, any questions or comments on the motion? Okay, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote.
Last item, Mr. President, but hopefully will be the smoothest. I move that the Board of Commissioners authorize the advertisement of public bids for the Township's twenty twenty-one highway resurfacing program. Total of fourteen streets are proposed to be resurfaced in twenty twenty-one for an estimated cost to the Township, three hundred and fifty, three thousand eight hundred and sixty-two dollars and fifty cents. Copies of the bid's specifications for the project along with a complete list of streets to be resurfaced will be available in the office of the Township Manager beginning April nineteenth, twenty twenty-one. That is my motion.
Thank you. Um, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Uh, any questions or comments on the motion? Okay, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Okay, please record a unanimous vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. That concludes my report.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Lee. So next we will move on to Commissioner Cobb, the chairman of our zoning committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, first, uh, like to announce that our next zoning hearing board will be held on Monday, April twenty-sixth at seven P M uh, through our uh, digital format online through Zoom uh, in which we will hear two applications. Uh, the first application of Jan and James McDonald, owners of a property located at sixteen oh two Walnut Ave in Orland. Um, the applicants are seeking approval to construct a deck to the rear of the existing single-family dwelling that will encroach into the required rear yard setback area. The proposed deck will reduce the rear yard to fourteen feet in depth instead of the required twenty-five foot rear yard. Uh, and then the second application uh, is for Carol uh, Imperatris and Kenneth Miller, owners of the property located at seventy-eight oh five Linden Road in Windmore. Uh, the applicants requested a dimensional variance um, seeking approval to construct a six square foot addition to the side of the existing single-family dwelling that will increase the existing non-conforming building coverage on the property by less than one percent. Um, copies of the application packets are available for review in the Community Development Office during normal business hours uh, at the Township Building or on our website at springfieldmonco.org. Uh, any questions you may have can be addressed by contacting uh, Mr. Pennical at two one five eight three six seventy-six hundred. And in addition, I have uh, two motions. Uh, first, uh, regarding the zoning ordinance, I move that the Board of Commissioners authorize the advertisement of an ordinance and public hearing to amend chap- chapter one one four zoning of the code of the Township of Springfield by imposing a forty-five day deadline for issuance of use and occupancy certificates and to provide for the extension of the expiration of zoning relief in certain circumstances. A copy of the proposed ordinance will be posted to the Township website. And that's my first motion.
Thank you. Okay, do we have a second for that?
Second.
Second, thank you. Any questions or comments on that motion?
One question, I just wanted to clarify again. So this is a, this is giving a deadline where we don't have a deadline in place, but a potential legal deadline that we will avoid.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Okay, um, so um, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote.
Great. Uh, my second motion is regarding uh, seventy-nine fourteen Cheltenham Avenue. Uh, I move that the Board of Commissioners authorize the Township Solicitor's Office to defend the zoning officer's decision denying the use of the single-family dwelling located at seventy-nine fourteen Cheltenham Avenue as a sober living house for up to twenty-three individuals. And the Solicitor's Office is further authors authorized to engage such expert witnesses as may appear necessary to effectively oppose that application. That's my motion.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on the motion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. Okay, please record a unanimous vote.
Thank you, Mr. President, and that concludes uh, my report.
Great. Okay, thank you. Well, that concludes, let me see. Yeah, that concludes all of the committee reports. So now we're back to the public portion of the meeting, last but not least.
Don't we have a, don't we have public ser- servicing?
That's what I'm doing right now. I'm gonna announce that. The board is also now open to comments or questions from the public, so.
I I thought there was a motion about the uh, resurfacing of the highways.
We did that.
We did that.
Okay, okay.
That went pretty smoothly.
Yeah.
He was so busy laughing, he forgot.
That was Commissioner Lee's dad, classic dad joke.
That's all I got anymore.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
All right, and any questions or comments? Any, any raised hands? Okay, going once, going twice. Okay.
We got one.
Okay, Kelly, go ahead.
It's me, I'm back again. Thank you all. I have a question related to the COVID relief that was mentioned Monday, and I just want to understand the process of how community members may become aware of that, how the use of that money gets like ultimately approved, and if community members have any kind of input, say, awareness before people make determinations. It sounds like storm sewer management was discussed. And I'm kind of wonder- wondering why things like um, the support of our township employees who worked through COVID wasn't considered. There was a comment about how like we talked about that, that's a possibility, we didn't consider it, and I was just wondering if there's some context the board could share.
You're talking about premium, are you talking about premium pay for employees?
He's gotta be unmuted.
Yeah, she's she's muted.
I got you, Miss King. There you go.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Um, I heard to the effect of that, but I'm really just curious about the process. It was mentioned, and I think it was Brandon who mentioned that it was discussed about premium pay for employees that work through COVID, but we determined that that's not the avenue we'll go, and I don't want to paraphrase what you said, Brandon, but I'm just, it brought to light my curiosity on how those types of decisions, that's a large amount of money for for the township, and it's great that we're able to utilize that. I'm just, I'm trying to draw the parallel on how COVID relief money would be used for stormwater management. And I just want to know the decision process of the board on how, like, does the board vote on how that money's made? Is that up to the Township Manager, et cetera, how that money's utilized, excuse me? I just really want some insight to understand the process, if that's okay.
So just real briefly, we we made some recommendations to the Board of Commissioners, but the board took no action on that. It would certainly be up to the Board of Commissioners to decide how that money would be utilized. Um, as of right now, the details on the use of the funds are somewhat sketchy. Um, we're waiting for further guidance from the Treasury Department and from the Commonwealth, who is gonna ultimately uh, distribute the money to local municipalities like Springfield uh, who have a population of less than fifty thousand. Our recommendation on not um, providing premium pay to individuals who work throughout was the fact that none of our employees were laid off. None of them suffered any kind of financial loss as a result. Um, and we did take great effort to try and make sure that they were safe and provided them with the P P E that was necessary throughout. So, and and the board did actually um, provide periodically um, little expressions of gratitude to the employees by buying them breakfast and um, holding a pizza party and some other things during the pandemic. Um, but it was kind of tricky because you can't really assemble people together, so it had to be socially distant.
And to Mike's point, or to your point.
Sorry, Commissioner Cobb, do you want me to go first or you?
You can go first, Miss King.
Oh, thank you. So respectfully, I think, you know, there's a general consensus in our township, which I completely agree with, that our Public Works Department, for example, is amazing. I know the library had to shut down for a period of time. You know, I know we all struggled with financial hardships. Many of our community members and employees because of COVID. So I'm just curious why, you know, the decision would be made that like a breakfast here and there might be appropriate when four point eight million dollars, I mean, a small thank you to the people that like risked themselves and a lot of unknown, I think could go, you know, a small financial thank you could go a really long way and not really interrupt the board's intention on how they might allocate that money. I just think it should be considered, and I think if the community members were aware, they would um, you know, not to speak for others, but they would probably agree with the sentiment that there's probably something we could do for the people that, you know, um, risked themselves and their health and their safety in the time where so much was, you know, unsure and unknown. So thank you, that's just my input. Sorry to speak over you, Commissioner Cobb.
Oh, not not all missing. And I was just going to say that um, one, your your advocacy is 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 well heard. Um, I know that we we did take great point pains, and as Mike said, um, ensure that no one was was sort of furloughed uh, during the time uh, and even kind of continued to pay employees who didn't um, I mean, for, you know, like library that was closed. Um, but Brandon, it it, at least it's it's still a question about what we can use these funds for, but it is pretty clear that they need to be some sort of infrastructure project. Is that correct? It needs to be either broadband related or there was a list that we went through.
Yeah, and uh, just as a point of clarification to to Miss King's comment, uh, Springfield Township is not not estimated to get four point eight. Uh, the total that we are estimated uh, to get is one point nine million. Uh, and that's dispersed over two years. So we're talking about, you know, about nine hundred thousand odd uh, for twenty twenty-one and another nine hundred thousand odd in twenty twenty-two. Uh, so it is not four point eight, it is uh, one point nine. Uh, and you know, as uh, Mr. Taylor referred to uh, earlier, uh, we are, there is a lot of details that are lacking in terms of the the federal guidance. Uh, they do have a list of uses that we are eligible to use it for. Uh, but again, we are waiting for specific uh, guidelines and rules and regulations uh, from the U S Department of Treasury. Uh, they do have sixty days uh, from the signing of the act to get those to the state. And then the state in turn has another thirty days to kind of uh, review that and disperse it to the localities. Uh, because as uh, the law is written, uh, townships that have fifty thousand people or less will, you know, have the state to as a go-between. Uh, whereas communities with higher populations such as Abington will deal directly with the federal government. So we're waiting on guidance from the federal government as well as guide additional guidance or anything else that the state might come up with. Uh, so you know, they do have a preliminary list, uh, infrastructures on them, you know, whether it's water, sewer, broadband. Uh, Mike, uh, Mr. Taylor and Mike recommendation to the board, and again, just a recommendation uh, would be stormwater, uh, because we do have a lot of stormwater commitments uh, uh, as part of the Wisconsin Clean Water uh, Partnership. Uh, and you know, there are other various uses that we can use it for, which I would imagine would be a a topic of discussion once we get further details from from the state as well as the feds. Yeah, but just to emphasize, you know, we are not getting four point eight, we are getting one point nine. And again, that's an estimated number. Uh, we will not know exactly the the exact total uh, until we hear back from the state.
I think Miss King has one more comment. I think Miss King has one more comment.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to thank you for that clarification, because I definitely must have misheard that number from Monday. And also, I, you know, understood it, that you had mentioned on Monday that it is a possibility to consider some of those funds, based off of what you understand. I understand you don't have all the answers quite yet from the state or the federal government. But I took the interpretation, and which is why I wanted to ask today, that what, a comment that was made by, I believe it was Branda, and indicated that it is a possibility to use that for people that worked during COVID. So I appreciate your clarification that it isn't four point eight. I think that's a big difference. I'm a little confused and concerned, and I think, you know, we'll learn as we go on the stormwater management and how like that seems to be really related to development, right? And how, so we're gonna use COVID funds for potentially land development and storm water management due to development. But I, I'm honestly, I'm probably naive in my understanding of that. So anyway, thank you.
Without getting into too much detail, it's an obligation that we have that was imposed upon us by the Federal Clean Water Act, handed down to the Commonwealth and then down to the local municipalities. It is related to development, development in that our town has been developed prior to any stormwater management controls being required. So we're sort of paying for the sins of the past for all of our homes that were built before stormwater management was something that had to be imposed.
Yeah, and just to highlight, we have stormwater issues that are existing that we, we, I think Mr. Cobb mentioned, outside of traffic, water on people's property is probably the, the number two complaint. And we, we talked about the, the resolution with Sandy Hill or Sandy Run Country Club to help alleviate that. And that's a, that was a beneficial, lucky thing, you know, that, that there was an opportunity to work together there, but there's a lot of homes impacted that don't have such an opportunity that it's pretty big dollars to try to fix those problems.
And if I could just put a, a, a final point on Miss King's comments and, and sort of echo other comments that we've heard, we heard at the workshop from Miss Ratzong, that your advocacy on all of these issues and your participation, particularly over this past year, really has been a tremendous boon to a lot of issues. And even something like the, the, the approval of the body cameras tonight. You know, you're, you're a part of that. And your advocacy on all of these issues i- is something that, you know, we, we hear and you're part of that conversation. And, you know, that's, I, I recognize sometimes it can be frustrating that the pace of change and pace of implementation in government is slow and arduous. But, you know, these issues are moving forward and we definitely hear you and greatly appreciate your advocacy on, on these and, and a lot of issues. So, thank you.
Mike Taylor, I got one question, just on this same issue. Regrettably, I know we had a number of municipal employees who did contract COVID and had to you know, leave the workforce for a number of days, weeks, hopefully not months, but did we continue to pay them in, if they had become sick and couldn't come to work?
Employees have sick leave that they were available to utilize for that purpose. And if they contracted, or were suspected to have contracted COVID from a coworker by way of their work arrangements, we held them out administratively. They were paid and they were not penalized, so to speak, with the loss of any vacation or sick leave as a result of a workplace contact.
Okay, and did, did we determine that most of them were workplace contacts or, or not?
It varies, Pete, I mean.
For golf trips.
You had, you had some spikes that came through early on, and more recently, we've had a few. Fortunately, the testing has become more widespread, you know, more available. And we've been able to get that done through our workers' compensation insurance company. They've obtained those tests independently, and we've made arrangements to get them done rapidly. So it, it's kind of figured itself out.
Did we actually lose any employees to COVID? I mean, did they not come back after they were sick? And not that they died, but no.
No, not at all.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay, well, hopefully that answered some questions. Anything else? Any other questions or comments? Okay, well, in that case, well, been here for two hours. All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn and I'd like to make that motion.
So moved.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? We're adjourned. See you next time. Thanks a lot.